Well, I'm really glad because I had to update my password and have to do that for City Hall anyway. So it's a good thing I'm here. So we are recording?
We are recording.
Why you all have to wait for me to change my password? Hey, maybe not. You good?
Yeah.
All right, so we have roll call done, so now we're gonna do Pledge of Allegiance. Or do you want to start over?
Just can you? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Approval of the minutes. April 16th. That would be the blue one. Travis, this is your last shot. Do you find anything?
You guys got to make thirty?
I had her triple check it. Yay, you want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to approve the motion. Second.
Okay, so we got first, we got a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes, accounts payable. Um, we have the list of expenditures. It's on the green sheet here. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve claims.
Travis is just showing off now. Okay, who gets a second?
I'll second that one.
Nikki gets a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Got that one done. Next item. Public time. You're on.
Thank you. I appreciate you allowing me to speak. I'm Dan Kitley. I'm a Republican running for Minneapolis County Commission. The Republican primary is not too important and appreciate your support. A little bit about me as far as, uh, I've been in South Dakota since 1979. I grew up on a family farm outside of Sioux Falls. And I'm a four inch alone, F day alone. And I learned how to work hard on the farm. I had some brothers. My parents had no girls, so worked hard on the farm. And once all the kids were gone, my dad retired. He had it figured out. But I went South Dakota State. I've been in public relations or business development, sales all my life. Recently retired. And I determined I couldn't play golf every day. So I decided that I need to have a, I went, uh, had too much energy to go into retirement. So I went into preferment. I'm gonna do each day what I prefer to do. So I think that certainly should be coined, preferment. So I want to give back. And one of the things I thought I could do is I've been following the county commission for several years. And they run a very tight budget. There's not a lot of staff there. But the one thing I want to make to reassure within the county is public safety. Uh, we gotta make sure we take care of our rural fire departments, BMS, as far as service, the fire protection ambulance service, as well as the sheriff's department. Uh, and they're making sure it's multi-mic safe. So that's the highest priority that I offer. We want to make sure we're road, bridges and roads stay well maintained best we can. With the limited budget that we have. Uh, everybody complains about taxes. And unfortunately, Minneapolis County has roughly a budget of a hundred and fifteen million dollars. All of about two million or three million is mandated by either state or defense. So they mandate all the different services that we have to provide as a county. So there's not a lot of fluff there. So again, we have to deal with what we can with the tax base that we have as far as the, that goes. So again, we're counting on the counties to continue to grow as far as our, the small communities within the county to grow as far as health and property tax needs. But again, that tax base goes to the school districts and the cities as well as the county. So there's not a lot of fluff there, but I'm willing to give back the time it takes. And I appreciate everybody's support. I have a little flyer here that I put in the back collar. You can pick that up, read a little bit more about me. Or you can certainly reach out to me. I'll leave business cards back there as well. There's any other questions, I'll get out of your hair. And I still like to look.
Thanks, Dan. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else Republican? Yes, ma'am?
I just happened to go to the top and I noticed the swings are gone.
Mm-hmm.
Anything to replace them?
Mm-hmm. Um, we had, um, an insurance adjuster come and said that our swings needed to face in a different direction because the direction that they were in was not copacetic with our insurance. And so, um, we have new swings coming and thoughts is all over it. Yeah, it'll be nice. And then, yeah, because we've got, we have infant swings coming too. Yeah. So we got infant swings coming too. I know. So hello, Steve. Okay, um, all right, so public time, old business. We have the malt beverage license. Yeah, I had all these in order until I moved it. It is time to renew the malt beverage license for, um, plastic point. So they have the form here. Um, everything is standard, nothing's changed. And so, I mean, I'll have you take a look at it to make sure, but I just need to make sure that, I mean, do you guys have any questions? Is there any reason not to remove this or renew this?
I believe so.
So I just need a motion that we go ahead and renew this.
I'll make said motion.
Travis is leading the path today.
Second.
Travis and Ryan, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that one's good too. And then, um, as far as City Hall, um, updates on that, we're hoping that you'll have updates next month. We don't have updates this month. And as far as fines and fees review, that's gonna come in with the ordinance review, which we're gonna talk about in a little bit here. And so that is also going to be moved back. And so, um, at, at this point of the meeting, I guess we adjourned because we have a change in leadership now, right? And so I guess I just want to take a moment to thank Travis for his service. So so we appreciate all you've done and try to fill in the gaps.
Absolutely.
As there were many.
Remember, I'm not dying, I'm still dying.
No, we'll be, we're gonna state that further. And so, yeah, so we are adjourned as is, and so now we need to reconvene.
Sure.
Thank you. Loop to adjourn.
Seven twelve.
Seven twelve.
Second.
I got Ryan. Ryan, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? You sure you don't want to oppose? Thanks.
I have my chance.
All right, well, we are, we are there and, um, Steve Bobey, we got a chair. We got it all built for you. So come on and join us. So now we are at seven twelve. And we are going to reconvene with the new council. So then I will call to order and we're going to do roll call again for fun.
I'm U.S. City Attorney. Steve Moby.
Word one.
Word one.
Perfect.
Brian, reading word two.
Thank you.
And word one.
Deborah McIsaac, Mayor.
Ryan, sending word two.
All present and accounted for. All right, we're on to new business. So we're gonna do oath of office. Um, we were thinking that Mr. McIsaac probably needs to do an oath of office too because he didn't do it even though it was, um, you know, you were unopposed. But we thought just to make sure that the
Truth.
The paperwork was correct. Have you gotten ahold of Nate yet to work this thing? Okay, that's me. Um, let's see. So John, I think you're probably most appropriate to do this. Now, I don't know if we just want everybody to do it at once or, well, let's just do this. Okay.
Sure.
So you guys need to stand up and raise your hand, right? Right way on the left. That's right.
We could do the I state your name. I see. I having been appointed the Office of Alderman, word one, Steve Alderman, word two, Brian. You solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the states of South Dakota, and you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your knowledge and ability, perform all the duties of the Office of Alderman for word one, word two of the city of Baltic South Dakota as provided by law. And they will render a true account of the money credit accounts and property of any kind that may come into your possession while performing your duties. So please say, I do. All right.
Great, then we just need you guys to sign that.
Steve, there you go.
And then send it over to me and I'll get it signed and we'll get it sent. Perfect. Thank you. Right. And then we have resolution. Sophie, you're up.
And the city paid us dues and we helped them with grants and loans and municipal organizations, zoning organizations. I won't steal Sean's thunder, but, um, just a little update. What month is it, May? In April, we submitted a land and water conservation fund grant for Baltic Heights. So that successfully went in by the April twenty ninth deadline. So I suspect we'll hear about that later this year, maybe like fall timeframe. Um, and then if you're awarded, it would likely be late this year, early next year. So
A little point of order on that, though, just so you know, they do a site visit in Baltic. That's part of the process. So that'll happen this summer and then we'll find out in fall-ish.
Correct. So, um, when I was here a couple of months ago, uh, we talked about some other grants that you were interested in. And one was a community access grant. And what I heard was that you're interested in maybe doing some road reconstruction on Lovely Avenue. So I have a resolution that hope made it available today. And it would be to number one, apply for a community access grant, um, up to six hundred thousand. Um, that's their maximum that they'll award. And then if you were awarded that grant, um, the city has to, um, provide twenty percent in match, which, um, I think I have wrong there.
So Twenty.
Yep. So, um, I will fix that and send it to you all. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
So do we need to approve the resolution as amended?
Yes. And then I can get that to Lacy and then we all can sign it.
Okay, any questions about that?
It's due, uh, July fifteenth.
So we have time.
Yes.
If we're awarded this, do we have to start immediately? Okay.
No, and I, I can typically get a year of design. And maybe Justin can say anything.
What would that road improvement entail? What are you looking at from it?
Surfacing mainly.
Kind of fixing all the potholes. Making it smoother.
Were utilities involved in that too?
Uh, there would be some utilities, but those were replaced in the whole three. So again, that old third, yes, correct. And most of it, uh, maybe the oldest stretch would be from the heights, which would be ninety-five, ninety-six era. That was done. So, uh, those utilities and a lot of those two utilities are in the ballpark.
Curving gutter.
If you want to go that expensive, you can put curving gutter along that road, but it's
Yeah, just repairing that road, the surface of that road alone would be easily in the six hundred thousand dollar ranges.
One of the things we did with, um, six hundred thousand, max grant, we did a call for you to spread the pipe or it's gonna be the most higher right level, may I see what city can cover. Make sure it just be a reasonable design and we'll mostly die around.
So what we dream today is just the resolution to get the ball rolling. And then we'll come back with some better ideas of what that looks like, Deb.
Yes. Specifically, I was hearing rumors of why you need
I don't know why we I don't, I don't, I haven't heard, I have not participated in those conversations.
And those sidewalks?
Sidewalks is another conversation. Anything else?
Uh, no, unless you want me to talk about the sidewalks.
Yeah, you might as well. See, she's already standing.
Okay, so that's a community access grant and, um, sort of in this same vein, a lot of communities will, I call it the type factor. You get the community access grant, you get the sidewalk grant, which is the public transportation alternatives program.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, typically they'll do it, that's our loan, um, to do the utility. So that's sort of the best funding that we can get. I hope Justin doesn't mind that I store your map and cost estimate to use that. So the transportation alternatives program makes, it's not the new management. Have to send a letter of intent in by July, um, fifteen, same deadline. So I think tonight, what I would like to get a sense of is where you all would like the sidewalks to go. The transportation alternatives program also used to have a maximum award of six hundred thousand, but they have, um, removed that. So you can actually go as high as you want. Um, we just have to come up with that about one in percentage match again. So I think, I'm not an engineer, but I think it would make sense if you're gonna dig up Lovely Avenue. Phase one is blue. I don't know how much blue you want to do. Um, there's also cost estimates on the back.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so maybe, I don't know, Justin, if you'd advise us to do a couple of phases or not, uh, depending on what you guys have the budget in that to.
You know, I, I totally get your point about if we're gonna dig up Lovely, then it would make sense to do blue. Um, where my head's at, you guys, and you guys can discuss this among yourselves, but just something to think about. The biggest ask about sidewalk is, is getting the kids to school. And where is that? That's getting us from Sixth Street, Fifth Street and Fourth Street across the street. And so, um, so we may want to be looking at, what is that, Third? Now blind. Um, which is more the red.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so you got the red over here on Third Street. You got the, the blue, the Fifth Street, you know, because there's that section of Fifth Street where the kids are walking up that hill. To me that, and, and like I said, I'm just sharing my opinion, whatever you guys want is fine with me. But I would say that when we've gotten complaints about sidewalks, usually Fifth Street leaves the way because of that stretch that is on a hill. It's not really safe for pedestrians. The second thing that I hear is Sixth Street because there's nowhere for the kids to walk. Um, that makes a lot of sense because it's right along the park. It gets us to the curb and then gets us across to Sixth Street. So all those kids can walk to Valley View and get to the school easily. So Sixth Street, Fifth Street makes the most sense for me. And then, um, then probably Fourth Street, um, up top that goes from Johnson Kringle to get them down the hill to the school. So it's all about trying to get the kids to the school. And that's, that's where my head's at based on the feedback that I've gotten from citizens. So now talk amongst yourself.
Do you want to repeat us that now? So we can see what yours
Got an extra one, couple of shots.
Deb, are you thinking Fifth Street from the bottom of the middle to the top?
I'm sorry, what?
Right, so where here we get this kind of a lovely avenue, a little bit on that bit, but you're thinking from
Because there's a bike, there's a bike trail running to the driveway to the north.
Okay.
So from the car wash down to the entrance to the park is the part that we get the most complaints on? For safe passage for kids?
No, it's that.
Yeah. That's our number one complaint. And then the, the one time where we had the, the traffic meeting, it was parents that were complaining about Sixth, Fifth and Fourth. Well, Fourth, they can get across to the school. Third's a bit of a struggle. So we could look at Third. But, um, if you, if you just want, and, and I gotta be honest with you, Fourth Street going from, um, Old Baltic to the school, that is a, a treacherous sidewalk because of the hill. So Justin, we'll take a little bit of creative stuff. So that might be a little more pricey, but you know, obviously we're gonna have to do it at some point in time.
That's gonna be a pretty tight.
Yeah.
So, um, any other thoughts, guys?
Yeah, I've got one.
Oh, I'm sorry, what? I'm sorry, Deb, I wasn't looking at, I'm sorry.
You know, I live on a lovely, you cannot believe the kids that are going back and being in store.
Yeah, that's a busy place.
That is a busy road and people are flying down that road and there is no place to them.
And the coffee, and the coffee truck.
Yes. That too. Kids are walking from the school there. You know, we see kids all the time on bikes and stuff like that. Yeah.
And most of the time they're in road.
Yes, there's no place to them, yeah.
I like the fact that you have phase one. Um, I think phase two and phase three should be switched. So then the rest of Lovely gets that little bit of sidewalk.
Would you worry about putting the sidewalk across from Murphy's Pond in front of, of the fire station area where that curb is super wide? Would that be, you know, because I know in the past we had talked about putting a sidewalk on the palm side.
Uh-huh.
We'll put a mention tomorrow.
Complete that. See, there's just so many options, Sophie. There's so many options.
I'm sure this is
Do we need to decide this tonight?
No, actually, that's a good point. Um, I do want to point you to the backside though. There is the cost estimate. All rooms look really um, so I don't know if you would
So, yeah, what we tried to do originally was, you know, we have though is that awesome minus a hundred thousand dollars per project and that's our kind of one day I will know, you know, we're hearing a couple of different things. Now's the time where we can kind of map some of these phases too. So if we're looking at another one, um, you know, just trying to understand how much sidewalk you want to get on. And we can revise these cost assessments to sort it or, I think, right? Especially like long level, the children's gear, the things that we can buy those into water, the stretch, we can move make that accommodate with everything.
Then sidewalks, we're talking sidewalks, so we're talking that would be going to the landowner. The city would do this, we could move, right? And the landowner would get a special assessed. Their frontage, right?
So we'll get a little bit of that. So with this grant, the twenty, eighty percent grant, twenty percent would be, you know, the city contributions, the advantage. So that contribution can come in many different aspects, one of those would be assessed and
A good cost savings for the people.
And that's where we had the conversation is should, should it be frontage assessment or should it be shared across all taxpayers since everyone uses the sidewalks? And I think when we had that conversation, one of the easy examples was we've got somebody with two hundred feet across their front. He's a single guy. Should he be paying the tax for that kind of assessment when you've got Mayor McIsaac who's got, what, fifty feet?
Not even.
Yeah. And
But I also have no parking. Look at the top of the road.
I already paid for a hundred and eighty feet sidewalk. So why do I need to pay for everybody else's sidewalk?
And that's the same, same point, aspect.
Yeah.
Deb, you're, you're definitely over the target because that's the conversation that we had. Um, there, you know, traditionally sidewalks and curving gutter are typically assessed to the property owner because they're the ones that bear the benefit of the, um, the increase in value of property. Um, but it's definitely something that's worthy of having a discussion. Um, if you take a look at this land, a lot of it is public land, which will automatically default to the cost of all of the, um, citizens because it's publicly owned or school owned. So, um, you know, so we just have to decide how we want to do that. The nice thing is, is that Justin is more than capable of breaking down what the costs are. So, um, at some point in time, assessment will be part of the, the calculation. I mean, there's just no way around it. It's going to be part of the, the calculation. But we have choices of how that looks. We have choices of, of how that is. So that way the burden on the, the property owners isn't extensive. And so it would be trying to figure out how to balance out the minimal, um, impact on property owners while still trying to accomplish what the goal is in Baltic that they've been asking for for years, which is safe passage. So
That column is a traditional stretch on that.
What's that?
Looks a traditional
Seven years of it.
Yeah, seven. I think you can, and seven you can extrapolate about.
When I bought
So you have homework, Justin, because we're definitely gonna have to communicate to the landowners what that looks like. And then, uh, I just want to I, I think it's important to have those numbers upfront. Yeah.
Yeah.
We definitely want to have an educated discussion. I'm glad you brought that up, Deb, because it's important. Um, what else do you need from us?
Maybe I'll just come back in June and
We want to see you every month. Bring us another grant.
Um, it looks like the Land and Water Conservation Fund, this is one of the, after we submit the LOI in July, they'll come to the site with it. And so we do kind of have to be
So everybody's got to mow their lawn, make like everything look pretty.
Right.
We need to do anything about this?
Yeah, we do need a motion to, um, approve the resolution as amended.
Well, you, you should say, say it again then.
I, I believe she did because she said
One, one. Perfect.
Apologies.
Okay.
So do you want to
Make a motion to approve the resolution with the amended amount of being one hundred and twenty thousand.
Versus the one fifty.
Versus the one
Okay, I got it first?
I'll second.
So we got, second, we got, we don't know.
Um, to my ask, just if we now have the next council meeting, if there are any more thoughts on the phasing of this. You guys think that's long for myself, then we can bring updated concepts and processes back also for your line.
But everybody email him directly. But always when you get the snattering of stuff, then you and I can talk about the cumulative thought process of that. Cool. Okay, um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, Sophie, we got another grant to do. Okay, and then, um, so be thinking about your sidewalk feedback, talk to your constituents, find out what they want to, get the feedback to Justin. And, um, we'll figure it out from there. Um, we are back to appointments. So we are in that lovely stage right now where we get to decide who's gonna be city council president. And it's not me.
Why not?
Do we have any motions? I bet Nikki has some ideas. She didn't, she didn't like force that of any check.
Make a motion to nominate, um, Brian McIsaac as council president.
Okay, we got a first, we got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, this is gonna be for you and you're all gonna, when we get this figured out, we'll do another round of votes. And then, um, now we need a vice president. Nikki, did you have any ideas on that one?
I'd like to, I'd like the, the right hand there.
Perfect.
Yeah.
So do we have a first, do you have a second?
Second, anyone?
Steve, you have a second. Steve, you got a second? All those in favor say aye. Any, I need all the ayes. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, and then, um, I'm just gonna run through these. So Ed, um, I would love to appoint you as the president of Planning and Zoning. You've done a spectacular job. We'd love to keep having your expertise here if you're down with that.
True.
Perfect. Um, can I get a first on that?
I'll make a motion to accept Ed as head of Planning and Zoning.
Perfect.
Second.
I got Nikki and I got Steve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Adam and Heather, come and sign this. Oh, here's my And then Debbie Murphy, I would love to have you on Planning and Zoning if you're up for it. Are you, you're open? Okay, I need a motion.
Make a motion that Debbie Murphy's not planning its own voice.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Steve is the king of seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Debbie, would you come up and sign this for me, please? And then Nate Patel is not here tonight, so we'll handle that in the next meeting. Okay. And then, um, Nikki, would you be a representative for the council on the Planning and Zoning Board?
Yes.
Perfect. I need a motion. Ryan is going to make the first on Nikki and I need a second.
Second.
Steve's gonna do second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Miss Nikki, there you go. And then Sinding, would you like to be the other member of Planning and Zoning?
Sure.
Perfect. So I need a motion for Ryan Sinding.
Do I have a choice?
I'll make a motion to, um, quit Ryan Sinding from planning and zoning.
Perfect, I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Perfect. Um, well, since we're doing everything, John Hughes. I would love for you to continue as the city attorney. I need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion to have, um, John Hughes continue as city, city attorney for the city of Baltic.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. And then I got Justin Hines. Um, I would love for ISG to continue as the, um, city engineer, and I have an updated agreement with them, so I need a motion that that is, Justin Hines will be your, uh, city engineer. And that we acknowledge and accept the, um, agreement for ISG.
Take the motion to keep ISG, yes, the city engineer.
I'll second Justin Hines, I'm thirty and under thirty.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Um, do I need a separate motion to have the authority to sign this agreement? So I'm gonna need that.
I'll make a motion to give Deb the authority to sign the agreement for ISG.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, I'll get that signed. And then, um, Justin, you need some of those. Thank you. Mr. Potts. If you're willing, I'd love you to stay on for the public work supervisor at seventy six thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-three cents annually. I'm just kidding, I just made up the cents. And so annually, with all of your benefits in place, um, I need a first and a second.
First. True for Ryan to stay on this, he's a supervisor.
Second.
I got it. Ryan and Ryan, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Mr. Potts, would you be kind enough to sign that for me? Thank you, sir. Um, also for the official depository, I need a motion to accept, um, uh, First National Bank up here in the street to be our official bank.
Make a motion to accept, um, First National Bank as the official bank of the city of Baltic.
Okay, get a first. Need a second?
Second.
Who wants it? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Newspaper.
Yep, um. I always forget the name, I'm sorry. What is the name of it? Thank you, Delster. Is it, so Dell's Journal would be our official newspaper. I need a first and a second.
Yeah, I make a.
Yeah.
I received a call from the Post Scout.
Yes.
And, uh, there wasn't enough time to consider the issue. They would like to be considered. As, um, official newspaper for Baltic.
Are they an official newspaper?
My understanding is yes, but I haven't looked at, there's apparently there was a quoting in this past session, I've not looked at.
Okay, so let me just put this to the council. Do we want to go ahead and just move forward with where we're at? Or do we want to have John research this and make an, uh, and reconsider or consider something different?
Well, that Dakota Scout, as I understand it, is a three paper, yes.
It is.
It's just where you can find it.
Exactly, yeah, that's true. And that's, and I just wanted to bring that forward because Joe, Joe Stevie called me.
Well, and it's interesting because I remember when we were looking for newspapers, there are certain companies that qualify as a newspapers and certain companies that don't qualify as newspapers. So I guess I would suggest to the council to allow John to see what the change of the statute is, to see if we have more choices that maybe we're not aware of because we always thought we were limited to either the Argus Leader or. Okay, so do we need a motion to do that?
Make a motion to table, sure.
Okay, so Brian's gonna make a motion to table. Any second? Steve's gonna make a motion to table, second. Um, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, then we'll talk about that next month. And, um, okay. John, how do you want to do this mass? Thing?
Sure, you can do it if you.
You just want to have everybody stand up? Yeah, just have everybody stand up and deserve, well, you gotta do it. So then does that mean I gotta do it?
I signed it, no, technically, the oath in writing.
Technically, you should read it.
It's what's, why don't you swear?
Let's all get swear, let's all swear. Oh my God, did you really just sing that song? Okay, everybody stand up, please, put your right hand on, please.
Yeah, you too.
Yep, Debbie, you too. If you're on this, if you sign a piece of paper, you gotta stand up and raise your hand. Okay, I state your name. Have been appointed to the office of.
Have been appointed as president.
Of the city of Baltic, South Dakota, so do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of South Dakota? And that you will faithfully and partially, to the best of your knowledge and ability, to perform all duties of your said office and your said office provided by law. Further, I will render, or further, you will render a true accountable money, credit, accounts and property of any kind that may come into your possession while performing your duties. Perfect, okay, we're done. That was easy. Because they're so excited. Congratulations, thank you. Another year together, it's gonna be so much fun. You're up.
Everyone, I'm Sean Hagian with CICAB. Uh, Sophie kind of spoke about what CICAB does. Go on the losing, or we do grants, we do some, uh, different grants and loans. Uh, the part that I do, though, is me and spoken voting and, uh, links and zoning for our communities. Um, this is a service that you guys already paid for. It's included within your guys' dues that you get at CICAB each year. Um, maybe the guys that called me or I called her, and we spoke briefly about, uh, office interest in revising their units code, uh, subdivision ordinances and, uh, zoning ordinances. So what I'm gonna be doing with you guys over the next about year to year and a half is working with you guys as a community to basically revise all of that and get it to where you guys want it to be. Um, it is a long process, um, and I will kind of explain that process briefly, um, because you might be here a year, two, year and a half. Oh my gosh, Floyd, but why does it take that long? Uh, the first step that we're gonna make when we do this, um, is we get all the ordinances from last time it was revised, however long ago. And we basically make sure that everything in your guys' current process are today with what's been passed or what has been brought, um, through ordinance. Um, whenever you do a revision, anything that's not in that revision that you pass is often works. It's no longer about to repeal anything that is in conflict with it. So it basically kind of operates as a restart. Um, whenever you get that passed, you say this is now our whole set of units code. This is our whole set of zoning ordinances, this is probably subdivision ordinances. So anything that happened before that date is no longer valid. So for us, we want to make sure that nothing gets forgotten or left out that we want to have in there. So.
Sorry, I've been having multiple conversations with John about this and Ed about this, and so that's new information. That, that's how it works.
So which part, the?
The fact that when you roll out the new ordinances, any old ordinances basically go away.
It's a big conflicts, um, but that's why generally you want to make sure that whatever's in the new code is there. The way that we word it, when we do the ordinances, is to make sure that, and that's not in there is repealed. So you don't have something that's on the books that you don't know about, and then someone comes up like no fires in the future and says, hey, this person's doing this and it's there, and then you have the question of, well, is it actually an affector or is it not? Uh, same with zoning, because there there have been community, communities where over like twenty, thirty, forty years, um, they might not have gone through a revision, but they do like very strict, they have a very strict procedure about whenever ordinance gets passed, it gets added in and it goes into a compilation and they have the full document then there. Um, with any type of staff overturn, um, or just, you know, general practicing principles for different cities. That might not always be the case where you have, you know, um, documents that were passed, but might not get added in, or it might be down later on, you know, it wasn't put with all the rest of the code. Um, and then someone pulls it out and they're like, oh, hey, we have this where the fine is actually, you know, fifty-five dollars. Uh, that's written in ordinance, but we passed the resolution where it's actually a hundred and twenty. And then as a cap, as a municipality, you sit there, you say, well, which one are we supposed to charge if we have, or we found an ordinance that was never repealed? That's a separate amount than the one that we have. So that's the general principle about why we go through, go through that process. Yes, of course.
You have questions about that?
Hey, I was gonna say.
You have questions about that?
What's, what's the last one?
Uh, eight seventeen seventy-two, no, just kidding. It's twenty-ten, isn't it twenty-ten? Yeah, I think it's twenty.
Yeah, and there's, and like I said, I haven't pulled up, pulled up all tips yet to start this process. Um, I'm doing this for other municipalities and counties I'm looking at for right now. Uh, so I have to kind of finish one of them before I can move to Baltic, so I won't be able to start all this into the gap. Um, so this is kind of a very preliminary moving forward.
The purpose of him coming today, and thank you for this, is to answer questions about the process. Because it's easy to think that it's just, oh, we'll just, you know, adopt in other cities and we'll just call it that. And it's, it's a little more complicated than that in making sure that we have everything covered. Like he, to, to your point, that if you're gonna roll in new ordinances and there's something that isn't covered, that's in our local ordinances, that will remain in play. Unless we choose to take it out. So there's gonna be a little bit of hand scrubbing, right? And so, um, it, it, we have to figure out whose ordinances we need to follow or want to follow. We choose who we want to follow. And then from there, we compare it to our current ordinances, figure out the inconsistencies, clean that up. We also have to go through basically a legislative audit because we're gonna have to figure out what's actually executed, what's not. We've had a situation that, that, you know, where things aren't fully executed and we thought they were, which by the way, I've found is common in many cities. So, you know, so that's a relief. And, um, so we need to figure out what is actual law here. And then figure out, he'll walk us through the process, but it's just, it's a lot of stuff. And since we're looking at zoning, we're looking at subdivision ordinances and we're looking at actual ordinances. The whole goal is to make sure that everything is clean by the time we're done, the lifelong goal of the council, right? And, um, and then also have it digitized so that way people can find it easily, have it searchable. And then we have, then we will operationalize the future of how we do this. So that way we don't have, you know, twenty-four-year-old ordinances. So there will always be a continuing process for this.
Yes.
And the beautiful thing about this is as much of a pain as it is, it's literally part of our membership, which is amazing. And it, this alone justifies the membership of CICAB, this alone.
And we, on top of, on top of this procedure of revising the whole day, we also do complications. So, you know, as soon as you pass a municipal ordinance and you're amending it, if you send it to us, we can immediately put it into the new code. Because generally when you have an online version, I think you guys, you guys use, um. Okay, so American legal, when you send it to them, the on map, they put on the online, it's great. Um, but generally you still need a physical copy of your guys' document, um, because what they'll say is they'll have like, like the whole fine print that says anything on here is, you know, a reflection. It is not necessarily what is actually in code. You gotta see your physical copy for it. So we, we can upkeep that. So as long as you guys, you know, talk to us about issues you're having, like if you wanted to change the zone, or not change it. If you want to change a zone, you know, you contact us with your favorite ordinance, and then we can send it to you and then update your zoning map. If you have, um, amendments you want to make, Ryan's emailed me a couple of times, or you've talked on the phone about amendments, um, to the zoning ordinances. You know, if we send it to you, um, you pass it and you send it back to me, and we immediately put it in there and give you that physical PDF um, that hasn't written up to date. Um, but yes, so it's, it's a long process to get everything finished. For both zoning, subdivision and municipal code. But then after that, it's all about your guys' internal procedures, about updating, keeping it there and then following the procedures. Um, one of the things I want to mention is that when you do these types of changes, um, they're always great, but it always does come down to enforcement. How are you going to make sure that people are doing? You know, I have spoken to, you know, as I can, and we guess that's for enforcement, I'm not gonna be doing it. So they're gonna be one of the set of items that we're on here to say, hey, if this is gonna be the new, you know, zoning ordinances or municipal code, um, what do I need to actually enforce it, ladies?
So it lends to the conversation, is this something we actually want to enforce? Is this something we care about? Is this just a weird rule that we had that doesn't make sense, or is it something that we really find offensive and we want to actually enforce? So those are the fun conversations we get to.
Yes, and, and there's always fun things you find. One of the other things, they, they haven't updated their code since nineteen eighty and they had a lot of. Again, you guys, you guys are in, well, I would say even if it's nineteen eighty, if you do a good job with your internal keep and that document, that is completely fine. Uh, the zoning ordinances for mini hop accounting are from nineteen ninety, but they do such a good job of whenever they do amendments that hasn't been needed to go through and revise. Uh, sometimes you do just go through that revision, you know, if there's any change or anything like that, that's, um, this amendment, you can only do one topic for amendment. Um, revision you can make a lot. So if you have like seventy-nine different things that you're like, we need to fix and get this done. Revision could be your, um, valid. Oh, sorry, I almost decided to do something that I was saying.
You had a question, didn't you?
Nah, totally, he's answering.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. John, is there anything new there? So when we start with this, it'll start with planning and zoning is where we're gonna start. So you guys have all sorts of fun things to do. And, um, we'll probably have a lot of open community discussions, so that way people understand what it is we're doing. I know that there was some consternation about us taking on code enforcement, and so I think that those citizens should come and, you know, voice what they think should be enforced and what shouldn't be enforced. Because I think it's really important with our new front office functionality, we can actually keep people apprised of the process. So if there's something that's extra special to them that they want to voice in on, then we can try to figure out a communication path for that. So people like, if people really care about fences, well then let's make sure they're invited on the fence conversation. If they really care about pets on a leash or not, then, you know, that, um, you know, we, we, we put chickens to bed, that's done. Nobody gets to talk about chickens, that's done. So, I mean, that one's staying. So any other questions?
The last thing I want to say is whatever we find in there, don't be embarrassed as a city or anything like that. The group that worked out for nineteen eighty, they had prohibition, they didn't realize we're basically banned dancing in the streets. Basically, I was joking with them, but it was basically a footloose. They're just like, you can't dance it, or the two people are on the road, you know, that's, that's.
That's okay, because Cindy would just be relieved.
So again, like, when this stuff, when we go through this and it happens, like, we'll find stuff, I will always bring it, before I take it out, I will always be like, hey. Because there's always a funny story how something ends up in code. There's always someone that has something they shouldn't do. That the city's like, we should put a stop to this, but I'll always bring it up and say, hey, this seems like something that probably shouldn't be there. But I'm gonna check with you guys, convert line all my edits, so that way you see the changes that are being made, so you can follow along. It's not just like, I gave you a three or two page document and you're like, what's the difference between, you know, what you showed us the last five times?
But, and isn't it wonderful that they do this for us? They walk us through it. I mean, that's really amazing. And that is not taking away from you finding us money, because we really appreciate that too. No, but you know, the thing is, is that we understand the value of this. And because of what our city's been through with codes and, and things like that, it's, we understand the value. So it's been really the goal of our administration to really get this done. I'm sorry we weren't able to do it sooner, but we're gonna get it now. Any other questions for this gentleman?
You know, yeah, I think about citizens involved. We know how many letters, so, like, for last one, fifteen.
Oh, when the code enforcement went out, seventeen letters went. Seventeen. I think we, I think, um, you guys got an internal report on that individually. Because it wasn't, it wasn't something we wanted to disclose publicly.
Okay, okay, I.
Yeah. So, because it, we're not gonna make a public spectacle of it, but I knew you guys wanted to know. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll be starting that in July-ish?
Yes, and I, I will provide you guys with some, because while I'll even with the, there's some things that I'll be, can be, will be time to kind of get these to me.
Oh my gosh, that sounds so fun.
If you love your documents, so I'll, I'll send you guys that, um, you know, probably, I'm, I'm leaving tomorrow, uh, to go to my, um, brother, he's rich. So I'll be going to Colorado.
Nice.
So I'll be back next week. I'll send you guys a list of different things that I could, you could do in the meantime while you're waiting for me to kind of start this process.
Sure. Well, I read ordinances when I can't sleep, everybody knows that, so. So it'll be fun. Cool. All right, so, um, I just wanted to bring up Fifth Street really quickly. Um, the adjacent landowners on Fifth Street keep asking what's gonna happen with their ditch. And are they ever gonna get their driveway back? And so, um, I just wanted to make sure that this was something that was brought to the attention of the council again because there are people that were affected by the Fifth Street alteration. And, um, and they, their property still hasn't been made here. So I'm not really sure what we're gonna do about that. I'm not sure what we can do about that.
Originally, we were gonna take care of that, um, the settlement.
I believe that that was one of the projects that was included in the settlement agreement. So we've been kind of put on hold for that. So since it was the developer, the developer's involvement in the alteration of Fifth Street, we were gonna use the settlement dollars for that. So, um, good point, I forgot about that. Um, but the citizen continues to follow up because he's on year two now of no access through the back. And so, or actually more than two years now, I think. And so, um, I, is that a planning and zoning thing to start with? If, if we chose to take, is that something that they should discuss as to whether or not they would recommend a council to take any action? Whether it would be wait till we get the funds from the settlement agreement or? Whether it would be wait till we get the funds from the settlement agreement or take action proactively? Does that start with P and Z or where does that start?
Deep dive, do you wanna take?
Well, we don't wanna go. I don't wanna take a deep dive.
Deep dive.
Okay. All right.
And we probably can talk about executive session.
Okay.
Pushed right up in front of us.
Okay, well then, you know what I'd like to do, is I would like to circle back on this Fifth Street issue because we are gonna go into executive session for a minute, um and let's run the chip seal really quick. So, Mr. Fodds.
For you, I reached out to Blacktop, Aspro Seal Pro and the Road Guys. Seal Pro is no longer does chip sealing, they just go with slurry sealing. Um Aspro is really pushing for slurry seal, they, that's kind of what they bid on, two balls. Uh but when the chip seal bid we got was for two fifteen per square yard. But now, looking at the cost of what slurry seal is, I jumped on to Stu Ball's website. Uh they actually have a bid for two thirty-one to do a slurry seal. There is extra cost in there, you have to do a lot more traffic control because you can't drive on it immediately, so you'd have to wear a kid's street. So that, that's all in these bids. Right now, with doing what square yards we would have for chip sealing, we can't afford to do a slurry seal. So now this is a whole other scenario, if you, we start looking at, so you're going every two years, you'll speak to me like this. Slurry seal products, we can build our street as something fun, so, and then we can pay for it.
We, we had, this was well-covered under our budget for two, this year, right, on three streets.
If it had been chip seal.
So if we held on for another year.
Correct.
We can pay for it, yeah.
So, and that's it. I've, I've seen slurry sealed on, though, we did it on.
What's the difference?
Yeah, can you fix?
The rock seal, there's a pink rock on top. The slurry seal, it's just a mixture that it turns, it's black and it becomes like a half inch.
Is that the part of the road?
They squeeze, they squeeze you in on.
So. So everybody, no more rock in the boulevard is what I'm hearing.
Yes, right.
Oh my goodness.
People would love that.
Yes.
So, I mean, it's a different thing, I don't, doesn't find no more on.
I have a dumb question.
Of this stuff. About money, I asked. I mean, chip seal was always cheap, but it's really getting compared to pricing, so trying more is.
So the question that I have, because we had, what is it, like seven different zones on the? Yeah, we have, yeah, we have those zones. Does this, does that affect that zone map? Because now it's gonna ta- take us to your, I mean, we're gonna have to, first of all, we're gonna have to adjust budget, right?
Think we only buy about a nap one year.
And I just re, I just redid it for uh seven year, but now this is gonna change it still then.
But if the cost is gonna double every time we do a zone? Right?
What was this, what was the chip seal price?
Chip seal is two fifteen and slurry seal with City of Stu Ball is two thirty-one. To be, it used to be a lot bigger. Now it's really close, cause there's so many more. Yeah, and that's the idle and the longevity of it.
So basically, every, we're gonna follow the same path, it's just gonna be slurring.
Correct, same as we.
Okay.
Save up that budget and money, in two years, we would be able to probably work than what we do one year. So we wouldn't be able to do two uh or three years with a project, but we'd be probably doing two and a half year or, you know, two-year projects almost. It was combined over the war.
So what is the, what's the road that's gonna get missed this year?
This whole heart town, whole heart town.
Any big effect missing a year?
A lot of, this is just the pre, we kind of did it, so we're just gonna put, but chip seal, so some streets are pretty good. But just to keep everything in rotation, so realistically, like if you drive biking, other than the bouncer, it's actually got a good chip seal quote on it, so. Um I think same a lot is the one that's a little bit more beat up than the rest, and same as that second downhill, but I think second going to the south is pretty good. Fourth street up the hill isn't really bad. Um Bag is how it went down. Third street's a little bit beat up, but so it's, that's it. That would be, well, we quit to next year. But then looking at the other streets, I think Elm used to be bad, but we just took it about two years ago. Valley View is a little bit rough, and that was probably, you know, in a previous, but we can switch it around. I mean, they didn't want to move that around.
Can restart the whole map so differently too, and then you put it off here, then you've got this budget plus next year's budget to accomplish it, and then, like I said, it lasts, it lasts way longer. Three years old or anything beat up to stay.
Correct, and I think the one that they really liked, the one with the micro-surface cleaners, slurry seals, you really gotta have a good one. You probably don't want, like chip seal, you can put on an alligator road and it, put a bench on there. I don't know how that, I don't, on the slurry seal, I think that would probably break up, just like what it is.
The worst thing is almost everybody's even fighting with chip seal.
And that's, and that's what Seal Pros, they backed out, they don't do it. So um Aspro does that, as effect is what the city has evolved. There's a lot of bitter, but for some reason, I don't see this with balls like sites. Can see who was actually doing that, I don't know, the tune and stuff it, or anybody like that. So, yeah, I was kind of, it was always a lot cheaper to do chip seal, but right now, it's.
It's not.
Terrible. And then the maintenance of picking up the chips and then not having to peel off.
With chip seal, we have to go behind and do street cleaning. Do we have to do that with slurry? So the money that we've been spending on street cleaning, couldn't that go to move up the difference in the slurry?
We have a sweeper, so if it doesn't, it's very minimal. I mean, it's just budget. Does it make it possible to do that? I mean, it takes, on the street sweeper, it takes me a day probably to clean almost all what was chip sealed.
Just wondered if you might get your extra twenty cents later.
Yeah, no, the guy said zero cost, but that's not even budgeted in their cost.
Is there any, is there a possibility that an overlay project be involved in most flights?
So we have the, and we don't put enough, we put thirty thousand dollars, I think, into our full street general fund improvement. So that's mainly just fixing actions.
Like to increase that. So we do a millimeter program.
So when we.
So I guess mine on this. Yes, such this, it's, it is what it is, but I rather just went off and piggyback with two balls and Dallas, you got Parker. Um Parker, I employ communities, I go in with one bit. I think we'll do it, so then they do the mobilization, they do the traffic control, it's all part of that, so it's all taken care of.
That's good to me. And I love the idea, not have to sweep up the ballpark.
Yeah, everyone's gonna be very happy about it.
I mean, that's, I guess I was thinking, it used, like I said, it used to be so much cheaper to chip seal, and that was what everybody did. But I think the Road Guys are probably one of the last one. Because uh Aspro, they gave me a slurry seal, it's nine, chip seal on that three dollars. But actually, they, they bumped their price because they're two sixty on the City of Stu Ball bid and rent, they give us thirty, so.
It's the economy of scale that you, that you give the states.
No, it's been, right?
No.
Come up the players, you have guaranteed work, they're all pretty good.
And chip seals are heating on up because the chips is, uh, locked on up in place. It doesn't cost to get the rock.
That's crazy, cause it's everywhere.
So.
Cost to make it that fine.
Costs. So I guess that, that, on that, I guess I would say everybody's kind of got agreement, I think we just.
Hey, that's great.
Build up our cost for, as we do six of us. Figure out what we're gonna have, try to guess what, what to follow, maybe add another twenty cents to it, and then see what we can probably get done next year. Cause then it would be a straight bit of competition, so we'd have over a hundred thousand, and we would have over a hundred thousand next year in our offers.
So Ryan, when we're doing the budget for twenty twenty-five, would you be acutely aware of this, that we make sure we're playing accordingly? Okay, cool. Um, anything else on that? Okay, um, on to the twenty twenty-three annual report. Um we'll make this available online, um it's all here. Uh I talked to Sean Fish today and he shared a couple of thoughts with me, so I'm just gonna give you the summary of the annual report. So the main focus of this annual report is, you know, basically it's looking at the general fund and the health of the general fund. Upon reviewing the income and expenditures, it's evident that there was, oh, and this is for December, uh year end of twenty twenty-three, sorry. Um so it's evident there was an excess of revenues over expenditures resulting in a positive balance, so that indicates that the organization performed well as it generated enough revenue to cover all expenses. However, when examining the water sewer um sections and electrical sections of the budget, there was a different picture because negative numbers were observed in these areas, but there's two possible explanations for this. One is we need to consider a rate adjustment because raising rates prevents the falling behind. And um if the current rates aren't sufficient to cover costs, adjusting them could help maintain financial stability. Number two, maybe there was an unusual expense. We would need to investigate further to figure out if there was an extraordinary expense related to water and sewer. Uh maybe there was a repair bill, that kind of thing. So in summary, I'm sorry. Yeah, this is year end twenty twenty-three. So um in summary, while the general fund performed admirably, it's essential to address the challenges of water, sewer, and electrical to ensure continued financial health. And then, of course, a detailed analysis we'll be looking at when we do budgeting. So this is, my thoughts on this is, I believe we had this conversation last year, and I think we did increase the rates.
Yes, good.
I think it was for the new year because we had to do it for the SRF loans, and then we also took into consideration that we needed to, you know, keep this into consideration for the health. I think Linda did a good job of warning us that that was something we're gonna have to adjust, and I think we had extensive conversation about it, just to make sure that we're staying ahead of the curve. Also, with the new water processing stuff that's coming down the pipe, we're probably gonna have to look at some other adjustments too. So, um although that they considered this a concern in their summary, I think it was addressed. Um obviously, when we do budgeting, or for this year, we'll definitely take a look at that and make sure that we're on par for that. And it's been accounted for, but other, all in all, it looks like everything's okay. So, any questions? To be easy on me. Okay. So, next, um. The Alliance franchise agreement, that is. Uh, isn't that midco?
No, it's Alliance.
Alliance.
Yeah, Alliance.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Alliance, I don't know why I said midco, sorry. Alliance, where is Alliance? I don't have, I know, I know. Thanks. Um, so uh we have the agreement with Alliance and that we just need to make sure that we have, we have to just continue it, right?
Yes. It's safe.
Yeah, so we just need a motion to continue our franchise agreement with them. I'll make a motion to continue the um agreement with the mass communications effective. Idiotly. And it's on signature. The term of the franchise proposed for the applicants is fifteen years, so.
Second.
And brands at the second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then vector agreement. Does anybody have it? I don't think I, is that what it is? I don't think I have that one.
That one, but your mosquito one?
Oh, wait a minute, yep, I do have that one, here we go, thank you. So that is the City of Stu Ball's vector agreement in order to be able to um handle our mosquito control program. So I just need approval to move forward with that. Any questions about this?
That's the same one down here.
It's the same with any year over year.
You just need to be direct.
Yep, I need a motion to be directed to be able to sign this on behalf of the city of Risen.
Make a motion. After city.
If the others in favor say aye, any opposed? Perfect. You're up.
Yeah.
Talk loud so they can hear you. Okay.
Parker does have some notices. It's gonna give you lazy that if people uh come to City Ball, uh develop projects, so Parker and him passed out project notices for both water main looking project and O'Nash today. So it's just letter to the residents, the projects, uh project overview, high level timeline, and a little placing map included as well, so you can look at those real quick. Uh like I said, those passed all the effective residences, this was our first wire that will allow as construction starts additional. Um flyers will be passed out with updates in one time. Uh we have both our contact information as well as the contractor's contact information on there. So all those residents, you have a good communication, always to us to limit your calls. Um, you all. But then, so, it's the whole.
Once you ask them, can you make sure those go off before the silencer goes in?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So we probably do.
Yep, uh that's one of those things I came up, so uh that's why we're, we're getting this out, we're getting our contact information out, so. Give them the notice and hopefully. We already sent those out, I was like, sorry. We wanted to give you those in the office, that way if someone comes in, what was you just get those out. Make some copy. So for the water main looking project, there is potential to start next Monday, they're gonna start at His Street and work towards Four Street. So it's gonna be least intrusive to traffic residents, et cetera. Once I have a concrete schedule on Four Street, we'll provide that update uh to City Ball, then we can get it up on the website as well as those residents on access restrictions, road closures, et cetera. Uh and those letters try to have order timelines, that way people have a high-level idea. We do have that rough project schedule in there, I'll continue to be updated as the project moves forward. Once project gets going, we'll have bi-weekly construction progress meetings, and we can send updates through City Ball to all of those, just to keep you guys informed. Um O'Nash, that one is looking to get a kickoff in June. They just have some opportunities to get the silencers in early, prior to construction starting. Um so it's gonna sit a little bit before that gets hot and heavy, but same deal with water main looking. Uh last project there, Main left station, we did get comments back from Danner on May ninth, so we'll turn those around for a quarter. Hopefully expect to have proof of Danner uh prior to the June uh council meeting, and that's when we'll go off and bid on that project. So, we have a construction completion date, uh I would say next year, and we have the loss of the time. Uh on that, and we don't restrict that too much. All they paid this far after our conversation um last night, uh we put together a quick concept. Um showing how to revolve it, they're on there, and some of the adjustments that would be required in terms of cart shelter, et cetera. Again, this is high-level cost, that's our high-level concept, proof of concept, to get this moving in the right direction. Our next step will do uh preliminary engineering to see what our costs are, what our green and are, make sure everything's feasible. Once we have some costs, we can continue our conversations on moving to the next step.
But you'd been involved talking to the school.
Yep.
Would there be space-saving ability if you rotated the diamonds so they're closer to each other?
So that was one thing Ryan and I were talking about, is we have file working for five inches between those two. We'd likely move those a little closer together to get one more path in between. So I think there's still some benefits of having some room in between there uh to get around. Um that would save us a little bit more space, we can do a little bit of that rotating. Again, for the concept level, we're just trying to get in the raw ball of art from the concept, when we get to that final design. It'll be really pinching everything down and saying where everything goes. Some of the benefits on the spacing between those two, we can have those fields that did some elevations, it's just so much harder to change from there too, so.
I think it's great. I think you guys did a really good job of trying to get that to fit.
So we did have some conversations with Musco too, plan would be to send them this, that way they can start looking at lighting layouts and how our lighting can play together with those.
Did that shorten up that diamond, things like from diamond?
Yes, it did. Um.
Well, we, we've built up, we, we put it exactly what's the school ball times of that right now.
Okay.
We make both those feel tight, feel comparable, so we make, either feel to be used.
Yep.
And it would still work for ten U baseball and under and twelve and soft on. It just wouldn't be, well, it'd be, they could use the permitted, but then they'll be.
Cool, any other questions?
So, so if there's any questions, feedback from this field.
Great, thank you. Can you give this to us in soft, can we hear that? Cause we'll put that on the website. Yeah. Um, Fodds, you've, you've already spoken a lot tonight, do you have anything else you wanna?
So, uh, oh, here comes the lot.
Here you go.
Okay, we can start, it's pretty much a lot of negative, bad, we're all like. Before you get started, fans off, a lot of stuff being dumped out there and not being dumped in correct piles and shingles out there.
Really?
Really? So, citizens. So citizens, police yourself. You see someone dumping somewhere else, I'm not gonna complain about whatever you say.
Well. I mean, how bad is?
Yeah, you put it back.
You're talking shingles like an entire roof or something?
Well, you like a shed. A shed, there are shingles, they're putting, say they're doing beginning yard service, so they're doing mulching their area yard or uh, grass flipping. So they'll pile that on there, then they'll put their branches on top, and then they sort of like composting pile, dump it all off. And vice versa, they do that, they put their sticks on the bottom, and they put their grass in pot, and then they go to the tree pile. And it's, it's been a mess that they do this year. I mean, it is every year, but, it is, it goes in streets, but I think if people police them, their neighbors, that can help out. There's a lot of people that will, takes out for their neighbors.
This is a free service and they're abusing it.
Correct.
Usually make points, make a, a big closest time of year about that.
That maybe it'll be.
Another thing is they're gonna immunity, they fence them, and then they charge a fee, and then they have someone on their basis. So.
So are you guys cool with Harrington making a coat, a post of white house people? And then let's add it in the water bill so everybody's reminded? And maybe we put it in the shopper too? So they can straighten up and fly right there. Cause I know that there's people from other cities that come to our place because it's free. So do you get to shoot them with the BB gun?
There and you see a neighbor bumping or, or if you see, a lot of the times we'll allow tree services that are doing trees in town. If you see a tree service in there after hours, just ask them where they're coming from and then do it.
Which, which?
Or which tree service it is and let me know, then I can reach out. It is for the citizens, if not for anybody else.
Well, and if we have to fence that and we have to charge it, that is gonna be. It's gonna be a huge inconvenience, huge inconvenience to the city. So it's really important that we guys.
Well, the city has done that before.
Yes.
Back, way back when John and I were on one.
Right.
Randy put up a gate and Adam. Yeah.
And I think you can throw that.
Yeah.
Putting up a fence and a gate doesn't make it better, it makes it worse.
At that point, you can put up cameras because there will be.
Well, we should.
City of Sioux Falls has two lead dump and tree dump sites. And we close it after, after the hours and people just dump stuff right outside.
Yeah, outside the gate.
Right outside the gate. And they come year round thinking it's a free service year round.
Well, well, hopefully people can straighten up because we don't wanna have to go there.
So maybe before you tend to say you start putting up cameras, which will pick up place and plates numbers and.
The hard part is. Sure, it's obvious, won't do anything about it. So we can, we can see who it is, we could, be negative, or we could post it on the website, but I don't think you can really do that. But you say, hey, this person was out there, anybody know? But that's it, that's all that they'll ever do. It's public ground and they're, they're like, same thing with campground.
Send a curb and leather.
Yeah, so they, the doghouse sewer, so uh, we actually vendor with our vendors who are cleaning all that. We were able to go through the old service station. We got down, all the way down to the main, that's with second street. Um, it was pretty well cleaned. Our, what the service line being that's in the alley, it was clean pretty much all the way down. When we camered the doghouse, we got out and it's been about four months since it's been jetted before. We got out about thirty feet from the alley, there's a seg in the line, and then there's already built. So we had to jet it, clean it. We got to there, we couldn't get camera on the bend because actually how, back in the day when they did it, and it's no different than the library, they literally just popped a hole in that line that's in the alley, and shoved the pipe right up next to it. So there's no Y, usually you have a Y, so the sewage goes, flows downhill and just keeps moving. This doesn't go anywhere. So what uh, Dylan with Bender kinda said, he goes, what's happening is the toilet paper and everything is just making it to that alley, just dumping down and it's flopping and it's just starting to build up instantly. So there's nothing out water. So it's just um, the uh, library had, a little pile of teepee, but the rest of that was clean. So there is just nothing flowing downstream. Um, so literally I'd say it is, property owner would have to dig up that service line, put a Y in there to help keep the flow moving downstream, but, there is nothing I'd say at the city's point, but that is our issue.
Well, I have to tell you, I really appreciate the thoroughness that you did, so we actually have some answers and they can make educated decisions.
And keep his video wasn't working, so I just put my phone, I have a video showing, where his service line came into that service, that main service line that's in that alley.
Has this been communicated to the landowner?
Correct. So I, yeah, so I mean it is no longer.
No, I appreciate the follow up. Thank you.
So that's on that. Uh, and then track sweet trees in between. Everything, I might go out and try to spray some weeks after this meeting to catch up in the damn lines that are in the.
Probably couldn't with the wind we've been having, could you?
Wind and moisture, and then try and get this, everything else in it. Um, and now ball games are all going on. So this is, I'll get about twenty hours and twenty, twenty-four hours is what they recommend for people to stay off the ground. So I'm gonna try to spray it tonight. At least get some time in the rains. Um, campground, we have new signs, I forgot to take, I can have a picture of that if anybody's drove out to the campground, we got new signs. Looks really nice.
Yes.
Uh, hold some gravel out there, build in some, we need more. Uh, LG others was really kind. They gave us a really great price. The three quarter down for the main drive through there. Um, so that kind of worked out. Um.
Trees get trimmed?
Nope, that's this weekend. Because we're playing around, fall schedule, they seem to have a game on Fridays and Sundays. So they're trying to do that on the weekend, so we can pick up on Monday. So they're gonna do that. Um, put the new panter test full then, so there you go. Pretty much as much as can be expected, so.
Eleven. Anything else?
Groundground open? Great, okay.
It's, it is bad. It's, it's very disappointing. It's not as nice as what I thought it was gonna be. The pictures lied.
It's a point.
It's showing like it's gonna be so bright and we're plugging in back here and it is.
With a candle.
It's very disappointing, we're not, yeah, put it up, but it's, it's very disappointing.
Do we wanna put it up?
I mean, at least it'll give some light.
So we can say this is the light of disappointment.
Don't believe I didn't see him.
I believe in it.
Just a notice, they're gonna do the mainly marathons tomorrow. Uh, they're staying out of the campground tonight, and so you'll notice people running tomorrow. Um, driveway carnival, we've got that um, set for Saturday, June fifteenth. We have six driveways. We'd like to have four to six more. Um, so if you want us to driveway, please let me know and we really need it. Um, dog days, the theme is slice of paradise. It's gonna be like a Hawaiian theme. These are the shirt options. It's only the, or the shirt. If you wanna wear one. So yeah, if you feel inclined to let us know which two colors you like the best.
We're gonna try to have T-shirt options and tank top options, two colors. That's, and it will be pre-order.
It'll be a pre-order pop-up shop with Panther graphics, so um, they'll take the orders up until about two weeks before, I believe. Um, and then that way we don't end up with a.
Blue and yellow makes sense.
And if you wanna pay seventy-five dollars for Hawaiian shirt, talk to Ryan sending, cause that's what he wants. So.
That is such.
Yes. Oh, no, you can bring that up too, yeah.
Okay, there is gonna be a community forum here on Tuesday, May twenty eighth, the day after Memorial Day with, um.
Jordan Youngberg.
Jordan Youngberg and. And they're um, gonna take questions and comments. And so the doors open at six thirty and the Q and A and, everything will start at seven.
So that'll be here. That'll be here.
Yes.
So, and it's a unique opportunity. Anyone in District twenty-five is invited to come?
Yeah, it's for Senate, sorry.
And so, and so they, um, actually, isn't it state representative? No, okay.
We thought that.
I know, yeah.
Yeah.
Anyway, um, but yeah, that should be a really interesting thing, cause not a lot, a lot of the other towns are gonna do that. So it's a really great opportunity to meet the candidates. So pretty happy. Well, and then cleanup day, June ninth, is that right?
Cleanup day is June eighth.
Thank you.
Uh, the rummages are the sixth through the eighth, and the cleanup day is on the eighth of June. Um, they're gonna, I, I have to clarify, but garbage and more sent me a snip of the Garrettson one. I didn't realize was there last year, they have fees for like mattresses and like that. And okay, so how did they manage that? I don't know. I don't remember that, but I guess I didn't bring.
There's usually a separate dumpster for mattresses.
And I know they have separate.
Yeah, cause there was something up at Baltic Heights and that was like. And then, then there was the truck down below where the tennis courts are, which we're gonna have to figure out with the coffee shop. They might not be able to be there that day.
Magisters are charged at the length of no matter what.
Yeah. So, so yes, those are both on the schedule as well.
Cool. Anything else?
No, I'm sure, but no.
All right. Awesome. Legal counsel? Any updates? Perfect. Um, I would, um, I think it would be valuable for uh, the council to go into executive sessions for two reasons. Um, one for reasons of personnel and another for legal counsel on, for um, what is it? Legal negotiation or legal matters relating to contract. So, I just need a motion to go into.
Make a motion to go into executive session.
What time is it? Eight twenty-six, right? Let me get a second with Ryan. All those in favors, say aye. Thank you, Sophie. So if you wanna just go ahead and um, you can also stop recording and then restart once we're done.
Okay.
Um, so that way.
We are gonna go into an executive session and we will restart it. Over and out.
I'll second that. Hold on, I gotta get something that writes. Eight fifty-four, Brian, Nikki, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we have some motions that we, there, we have some actions that we need to take based on executive session.
Make motion of a third one. Emma is a motion for Lisa Harrington to come back full-time as communications relations manager. Uh, Saturday sixty K. Second.
Second.
And reinstate original benefits, right?
Yes.
And so that was Brian and the second is Steve.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then we have, um, one more motion.
Um, I give, what is, are we talking about the posting?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to make a motion to give, um, Mayor McIsaac the ability to post the job for finance officer for the city of Baltic.
Same.
Okay, Nikki's the first. Ryan's the second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. And I believe that is all we have for business tonight.
Motion to adjourn at eight fifty-six.
Motion to adjourn at eight fifty-six.
I'll second.
Nikki's got the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good night Baltic.